I'd like to call to order the Forest Grove City Council meeting on Monday, June 24th. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Council President Rippey?
Here.
Councilor Gustafson?
Oh, I should have waited. I'm really sorry. I didn't wait to see if my people were on Zoom yet. Councilor Valenzuela is. Sorry. It's my first mistake. I'll make five more before the meeting's over. Okay, let's just go.
Councilor Martinez?
Oh, here.
Councilor Marshall? Councilor Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilor Ewing?
Here.
Councilor Gustafson?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here. Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Toallatin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Attilati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the audience and council please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I've got readers and I don't know how to use them quite yet, but... Our next agenda item is proclamations. Okay, so... Okay. Designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Forest Grove, Oregon, and whereas our Parks and Recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of, we should say, of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, where you belong. In Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and encourages all residents of Forest Grove to celebrate the vital role Parks and Recreation professionals play in bringing people together, providing essential services, and fostering the growth of our community. I'm continuing with our Parks and Recreation Month. I'm going to invite, who I believe is the longest volunteer commission member that the City of Forest Grove has, with over 30 years volunteering on the Parks and Rec Committee, Mr. Paul Waterstreet up to the podium.
Thank you. We're here to recognize a couple of groups and people that volunteer work for all around the city, county a little bit, but mostly in the city. And I would like here, like to recognize different groups of people doing this, all in the work for the city. And this plaque down front, and these are all the people and groups that 2010 have been recognized for their different things. So that's what I get the privilege of representing the Parks and Rec Commission and handing out these awards for the group. So, our first one, Susan. This is Susan Dieter Robinson. And this is for the Annan Abbey yard at Rogers Park. And when I started thinking about this, I was thinking, well, what can I say that Susan's done for the park? And it came down to concept, design, funding, construction, modification, repair, making this organized groups for annual cleanups, and then just using the park and being a really good steward of the park out. And she's been doing this for many years, and we really appreciate the work. And she hasn't done it by herself. She has nice group helper, Tom, you can come on up too. You got Alice, you can come up too. So they have specialized Rogers Park and Annan Abbey yard, and that's what keeps that park going. And Tom Martin in the back room, when I say merry-go-round, they'll probably throw something at me. They have a German maker, merry-go-round, and it's work, doesn't work, doesn't work. So this is for Susan and her hard work, and Tom for his hard work. And it says, Susan Dieter Robinson, in recognition of dedicated service to the City of Forest Grove and citizens of Forest Grove. Forest Grove Parks and Rec Commission and City Council sincerely thank you for your dedicated service and commitment for carrying Annan Abbey yard and Rogers Park. Thank you. Okay, our next one is a group, sometimes a specific project, like Boy Scout built birdhouses out of virtual wetland. But this is two groups, three groups, that have done this, and they just do different things. And some of the things they've done, before I say that, I'll say that the Rotary International became a club in 1905. And before. And this is the 100th year that the Rotary Club of Forest Grove is celebrating this year being an organized group of Forest Grove. I feel really happy for that. So some of the things that these Rotary Clubs do, they schedule them and they do them, and to make sure it's okay that it's done. So I saw a picture in 1974 of guys out there with shovels doing the incubator, cleaning that up. So probably scholarships, sponsors for about every athletic team in Forest Grove at some point. The uniform, put the umpires. And that's for basketball, baseball, swimming, soccer, wrestling, volleyball, water polo. Groups clean up the roads, the road cleanups, because they adopt a sign, they have two those they do, concourse, July, they all get together, done. So the Rotary, kind of for me, raise money to give away. Sponsor students that go abroad for a year, sponsor that trip for a year, and these are all volunteer. So we'd like to recognize people that helped get this done. And the first one is for the noon Rotary is Amy Tracewell, the president. The Daybreak Club is Doug Scott. Huh? Come on up again. This is your last official duty. And Hector Mendez? Come on up. And these are people that are current or soon to be replaced officers. They came over in July, so this is kind of like their last duty. And the Rotary Club has done all this throughout the year. So, City of Forest Grove in recognition of dedicated service to the City of Forest Grove and citizens, the Forest Grove Parks and Rec Commission and City Council sincerely thank you for your dedicated service and commitment supporting recreational activities and maintaining parks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to move on to item B on our agenda, which is public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the City Council on an item not on the agenda, or on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless the majority of councilors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Is there anyone signed up for public comment? Is there? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public comment? Okay. Would Mr. Yeah. Go ahead and come up, Ms. Truax.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Pete Truax, 3131 Forest Gale Drive, Forest Grove. I came tonight to do two things. One, to congratulate you on the good work that you're doing on the city charter review. I know that's not an easy process, and I appreciate all the work that you have put into that, as well as what the team did, that the Charter Review Committee did in giving information to you. The other point I would like to talk a little bit about was the council action or work session on the street trees. I am a member of the Forest Grove United Church of Christ, and we are on two of the two streets that are impacted by tour street tree discussion, 21st Avenue and Main Street. We also have some trees that are raising some issues, raising, obviously, some issues on College Way, and we will probably have that discussion later on. But again, I just want to remind you that, like Counselor Marshall, we are impacted by those street trees with raising concrete, with raising the bricks, with causing those grates to also be raised. And we are, have been in discussion with the city for about the last year or so, 13 to 15 months, about how we're going direct by that problem. And we appreciate the short-term solution that you have come up with and hope part the discussion for the long term. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Perfect time. Is there anyone else that would like to give public comment who has not signed up? Is there anyone on Zoom? I don't see any attendees, so I'm saying no. So let's move on to our consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any item or items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I second.
Thank you. Council President Rippey moved to approve the consent agenda, and it was seconded by Counselor Martinez. All those in favor, is there a discussion on? No, right? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. The consent, the consent, geez. The consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Item D, additions or deletions. City Manager, do you have any additions or deletions?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Proposed by councillors, Council Ewing. You're good now, I think.
Is that for Jesse? Because I lost all audio.
Okay. No, it's for, it's for to the councillor portion. Do you have an addition or deletion?
Yes, I do, please. I would like us to consider two things. One is we've gotten comment about backyard chickens. I would like to have staff put together an idea, bring it forward to us, talk to us about the safety and health of the backyard chickens that was adopted years and years ago with not a whole lot of requirements or controls. And it is a problem, as personally, our neighbors had chickens, they passed, the rats took over and swarmed into my yard. So I think that for public safety, we need to have staff look into that, and then also perhaps come up with some ideas on how we can better provide for the health of our community. So I would hope we would be able to, I've talked with Jesse, but I hope that we'll be able to have staff do a report on that so that we can be more informed about those concerns that are coming forward. The second is on proclamations. I know that this is the bailiwick of the mayor's position, but many cities have proclamation protocols, or processes, or policies that require their people that are going to want a proclamation to put that information in at the beginning of the year, then a decision is made on what proclamations will be actually put forward. The reason I bring this forward and wanting a policy so that we are doing this with overall fairness is that the American Legion came in, and they were really distraught, in my opinion, about not being able to get a proclamation for them read. And I questioned this too, well, why weren't they in that proclamation schedule? And there wasn't really an answer as to how it was determined that they wouldn't have a proclamation read. And so I think that opens us up to a lot of liability, particularly on fairness, if we don't have some standard process and policy on those proclamations, and who will be able to have a proclamation read. That's a real concern. I think it just helps us legally, as well as, we always talk about having policies that create fairness. And I'm not sure that, I don't know how the decision was made, but from my standpoint, there was kind of an unfairness in not reading a proclamation for them. I don't know why that decision was made. I'm just saying as an appearance and perception. So I would like us to consider that. Is there any way we could get that discussion and have the staff do some work on what other cities are doing with proclamations and bring it forward in a work session for us?
So Jesse or Paul, what's our next steps on that? Do you need something from the council, or?
So, hi, Mary, can you hear me okay?
We can.
So, under section six, B, 6.3B of the council rules, it says, "If a council member wishes to propose an item for a future agenda, the council member must propose the agenda item at a council meeting, and it must be approved by a majority of the council members present at the meeting before being placed on a future agenda." So it does require some form of action by the council if the council wants to have a work session on proclamations. And then staff could bring back some additional information about what other cities have done and that sort of thing.
Jesse, do you mind addressing, so is there a process, though, when community members or service organizations would like a proclamation? And could you answer, I mean, I remember the, what I remember the answer was for the legions. It wasn't a, like federally recognized, it was poppy day, like there were some, so I think that's, but anyways, if you could answer that question, and then do we have, I thought we had a process on the website for whether service organizations wanted one?
One thing that we did recently do was we did publish a process on the website, and so we are now asking if folks do want to have a proclamation to sign up a certain amount in advance, have a sponsoring organization. Basically, it takes section 13 of the council rules and kind of puts it on the website for proclamations. And section 13 says it's, it can be done for community events, community groups, community individuals, but it's at the discretion of the mayor. And so we kind of just outline that process. We did look at some other cities, not in terms of what the policy was, but what their process was for the website, and so it's up and going. Some proclamations are federally recognized, other proclamations are not. Proclamations that have been federally recognized have actually been approved either by Congress or by the administration. So there is also, similar to the process at the city council level, there's a process at the state level and also at the federal level. So there's different types of recognition. So, I'm sorry, Councilor.
No, 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 no. So I just want to make sure I have it clear. So whether or not the legion's poppy day was federally recognized would not negate us doing a proclamation. Jesse?
Oh, I'm sorry. So what, what the council rules, yeah, that's okay. The council rules are pretty broad on this, and I'll just go ahead and read it. It says, "Organizations, citizens, or council members may request proclamations that proclaim a specified date or dates to recognize the efforts of various community groups and individuals." And then it outlines the process that it goes to the city recorder and then to the mayor, and then the actual reading of the proclamations. It says, "Upon approval of the mayor, the city recorder shall prepare the proclamation for the mayor's signature." So that's the process that's outlined in the rules right now for proclamation. So I don't know if that answers your question, Councilor Ewing, but that's the, that's what it says right now.
Well, I think that this is a good example of the fact that I would really like to see a policy, I'd like to see us come up as a team with what we're going to accept as proclamations, when we will accept those proclamations, and making sure that there is a fairness in those proclamations. And if it does not require federal backing, then that would say to me, Jesse, that then it is up to the city to make that decision. And I don't know that there was that consideration made in this. So that's why I say, we've always worked to get policy into place so that there's consistency, there's continuity, and there's fairness. And I don't know that I feel that this process is fair at this point. So I'm going forward and asking, can I get the council to agree on putting this on a work schedule so that we can come up with more defined language so that it's not just kind of more of an open book? That's what my request is.
Council President Rippey?
I would, I would agree with having a work session discussion with regard to both the backyard chickens and the proclamations process. I think I would also add in there, based upon our earlier discussion today, that if we're looking at the council rules, we should address council president term limits as well. And have a couple of work sessions on those items.
Is there a second? I second. Okay, I have a motion, wait, was, I have a motion from Council President Rippey to have a work session on council rules pertaining to proclamations and to the role of the council president.
And the backyard chickens.
Yeah, and then a second, a second work session on policy, like city code in regards to fowls, I think, like, it's not just chicken, isn't it, like, I don't know, but backyard chickens. I think there's a better phrase. Is any discussion, or do I need something else?
Quick question, are you, Karen, are you going to leave it to the discretion of the city manager to bring the timing on bringing those work sessions back due to the summer scheduling and some of the stuff in the fall? Or do you want date certain?
I'm not interested in a date certain. I just want to get it on the agenda so that we are addressing it. But with the summer schedule, I wouldn't even hazard a guess as to how you're going to get those in there. So I'll leave that up to you guys.
Okay. All those in favor, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Two work sessions, or the city council has approved scheduling of two work sessions on council rules pertaining to proclamations, council president, and a second work session pertaining to backyard chickens and foul animals. That doesn't sound right. Okay, moving on. Sorry about that. Presentations. We have, the council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. Our first presentation is from our Parks and Rec Commission, and it's the annual update. And we have, nope, we do not have Brad Bifaro. We have Mr. Paul Waterstreet, who is Parks and Rec Commission member.
Two minutes, or do I get more?
I'm going to give you 30 seconds. I'm just kidding, I'm going to give you, I think you have.
Ten minutes, I think.
No, you have 10 minutes.
10 minutes, oh, okay.
10 minutes altogether, so eight, two for questions.
Okay, we'll do it.
But get us caught back up on time, though.
So, just going to tell you what happened over the last year, and then Ann will come up and tell you, kind of fill you in on what's going on right now and what we're planning on doing this year. So we had an assessment and fee plan, working through the process of cost of services and goal setting, and then pricing to a workshop with stakeholders and multiple meetings, recommendations from city council, adaptation of the continuum and recommended fees. So that's one of the things we're working on, is how much to charge people and when to charge people, et cetera. Universally accessible inclusive playground replacement of all the slides and stuff at Hazel Hills Park. So if you go by there, you see it's all dug up, and I saw some new sidewalks getting laid in there, so that's looking good. Eastside Park, we're moving forward with the community engagement planning of that. So if you've been by Eastside Park over on 19th, it's all been torn down, and we had people come over and say, we'd like this in there, that in there, et cetera. So we've helped the neighborhood and held a joint meeting with the Forest Grove School District, City of Forest Grove, City of Cornelius, and Pacific University regarding the future of recreation in Forest Grove and Cornelius. And I think that could be an amazing thing. You have four really good groups to work together, and I think you could really come up with some unique things to do and how to charge fees on it and what you want to do with it. So that would be awesome to see all those four people, four groups work together and come up with something really unique. The Forest Grove Loop Trail and Kyle Park Community Engagement Planning is going on, and we've received three grants from Metro Neighborhoods and Community Choice Grants. So, of course, Loop Trail is down off of B Street and 15th, and the Kyle Park, we had people come over, community come over and take a look at it and see where it is, and that's across the street from Waste Management. And the Aquatic Center has put in two new slides, they're a little higher than the old ones are, and so it's a little bit thrill. And then they're working on a summer program. If you go by there, you'll see the Bray Park in much greater use now that it's hot outside, so a lot of people are using that. And you'll see the start of recreation programming, things like Skyhawks and pickleball, and you go to Rogers Park, and they have all kinds of activities for children to do over there, and they're starting to fill up, and they're starting to use Rogers Park over there with the big container box where everything is stored. So keep an eye out for that. And the commission continues to work with the department to create a positive future for recreational use of everything out there. So we're looking forward to the upcoming year. So we're looking forward to the upcoming year. We've done a lot, last year we got a lot of things that are just carried over to this year right now. Questions?
Questions for the Parks and Rec Commission, Council President Rippey.
Thank you, Paul, for that. Pickleball has become a much more popular sport and is just exploding. And I understand that the chamber is trying to have a pickleball tournament go on, but we're very limited to the number of pickleball courts. Has the commission considered or talked with the department about how to try and address the number of pickleball courts we have in town?
We've had, we had one person show up six months ago to ask that question of when can we get some more pickleball courts? So they have kind of redesigned Joseph Gale a little bit to do. And Steve works at, that Calc, and they use the Armory for pickleball. And that's now available for everybody instead of just the school district. So you can go over there a couple nights a week to play. And the other courts that are, could be available with a little negotiation would be the school district, because they have courts at the high school. And I'm not sure the university is open to that, because they got some nice courts. But I did go by there and there were students playing pickleball out there, you could hear it play. So we will address that more, because I think there's some more courts out there that we can use.
Thank you.
Counselor Gustafson.
Just a, just a comment about, about pickleball courts and, and finding other courts that we can use. There was a conversation we had with the school districts and some other people that got together for that work session a while back. And one of the subject matters that was brought up was having a unified room calendar so that schools, city, other nonprofits could have access to requesting space in some of the schools, whether it be the gym, classrooms, that sort of thing. This could follow to that category as well, is finding out what our, what our resources are in, in both Forest Grove and Cornelius for us to share. I'm not really sure where we are on that project, but that's just something to keep our, keep in our thoughts when we're thinking about room scheduling.
And just to add on to the pickleball comment, in my other job, I work at Neil Armstrong. And so they're building this summer as part of the bond project. They're building an outdoor covered area. And so the PE department got to help with the lines, and there's going to be pickleball courts there. So if, if it's outside of, obviously, school hours, you know, a group would have to bring their own net. But like, there's going to be lines there, and usually outside of school hours, school property is open. But I think those are also comments we need to have, hopefully with our consultant, and working on recreation between those four groups.
Yeah, I think those four groups could really come up with some very unique things for, for more pickleball courts that are out there. Like the, the new ones at Cornelius, they're building new stuff out there. So I'm going to assume that there's going to be some pickleball space available that people could get creative out there. And I don't know who owns the area on the south side of Cornelius where all the new housing and is going in out there, the huge park out there. So that to me is a potential pickleball heaven out there.
Right. Well, any other questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Waterstreet, for coming and representing your group.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Always nice to see you. Okay, our next presentation, we're just going to continue with our parks theme of the night. And we have our Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ann Lane, coming to talk about the Loop Trail and the Kyle Park update.
So thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. I have Adrian Esteban and Jill Roselle of Alta Planning and Design joining me this evening. Alta was the selected consultant for the Forest Grove Loop Trail Master Plan and the Kyle Park Design Project. They'll be providing an update this evening on that project, on the project and progress made to date and where we're headed next. Thanks.
Thank you. A good evening, and thank you for your time today to present an update on the Kyle Park and Forest Grove Loop Trail. So, next slide. A little overview of the, of the presentation. We'll look at a little bit about the schedule, where we are, where we're going. We'll talk about community engagement update, we've had some events. And we'll talk about, give an overview of the Forest Grove Loop Trail, that would be Jill presenting that. We'll look at where we are with Kyle Park, that's a project that'll be designed and constructed. And then we will speak a little bit about the project-related metro grants that were mentioned earlier. And then we'll have some time for community. So we started with community engagement back in May of this year, so we've had several events happen over the last couple of months. With the Loop Trail Master Plan that Jill and her team are leading, we are starting with the existing conditions assessment. The next step will be into going into a comparative analysis and then selection of a preferred alternative. And then finalizing with an implementation. For Kyle Park, we started earlier in the year with looking at existing conditions. And we'll share here a little bit later what some of the existing conditions are in the park. We are now currently in the concept schematic design phase. Next phase beyond that will be design development and eventually the construction documents that we anticipate having by January. So some of the events that have been taking place here over the last two months, Forest Grove Farmers Market on May 1st was attended. We attended the Pacific University Powwow early in May. We had our first technical advisory committee meeting mid-May, and then our first stakeholder advisory committee meeting earlier. But we also had an event at Kyle Park on June 13th, which was well-attended. And we'll talk a little bit later about some of the things we're hearing from, from the public as well as our advisory committee.
Can you hear me? Okay. Great. So for the Forest Grove Loop Trail overview, you already have a great trail system here, as you know, and there's a lot of awesome connectivity. And we're just looking to create the loop and connect everything even further. So as Adrian mentioned, we've been working on the existing conditions inventory. And as a part of that, there is actually a website that's available, that's LinkCity, where we looked into kind of connections with bike facilities, the regional network, roadways, transit, and then also an environmental assessment, including looking at floodways, wetlands, topography and natural resources. All that was largely a desktop assessment. We've also been communicating with Clean Water Services and talking about impact and mitigation. And then we've come out, you can go to the next slide, and done a field assessment where we walked some potential alignments. Here you see the orange line there, that was kind of a proposed alignment from a previous plan. And we are realizing it's very challenging due to the narrow right-of-way and steep slopes. And we started looking at some other alignment opportunities, and we're going to have the alignment alternatives for you to consider coming up soon. Yeah, so and in the, the south, it's actually, the alignment is much more straightforward. Kyle Park, there's more or less a path that is already existing there. And we would just look at improving connections and access to the neighborhood and creating some more community gathering spaces and improving the existing trail network as best we can.
Thank you, Jill. So next we'll look at Kyle Park overview of the park. So we, like I mentioned earlier, we did an assessment of, of the site. And this is just to give you a general sense of where the site is. So this is a B Street trailhead is next to it, the, the B Street Self-Storage. But the, the property of the Kyle Park location, that's up there on the far left. And on the, on the south, we have Gale Street that the park abuts right up to that. This kind of gives you a general context of where the Kyle Park location is. So as I mentioned, we are looking at the existing conditions, and you can see park open space right there. That surrounds the B Street Self-Storage. Obviously, a self-storage location is, is within the park area, a private property. But I think our, our team would, you know, think that this would be a much bigger park if we were able to somehow relocate that B Street Self-Storage. So next, next slide. Based on our site assessment, you can see there's a lot of green space, open space. You also see, you know, Gale Street that surrounds the park. So this is just some photos of the site to give you a sense of what the topography is and some of the, the elements that are out in the site. So site assessment that the park is located within the flood zone. The purplish line that you see there is the flood zone boundary. And then the Hundred Year Flood is the purple dotted line that you see. So about forty percent of the park is located within the flood zone. And then the Hundred Year Flood boundary is around the park at the bottom end. So that signifies that there's a one percent chance of flooding there on an annual basis. That's what the Hundred Year Flood would be. And so it gives you a general sense of the, some of the things that we're dealing with as we're designing, looking at elements. So this is a, a opportunity, it's a constraint. The round orange dot you see there would be a location for a trailhead, parking area. The orange is really a flat potential site for a lot of different amenities in the park. And then the green is where you have steeper terrain, which could be an opportunity to implement some of the bike facilities. So as we did the site assessment, our next step was really talking to the community and understanding what some of the things they would want within the park. So there was a strong interest in both of the projects with a lot of support for some of the pragmatic ideas like a trailhead, bike facilities, play areas, et cetera, also with wetland restoration, particularly near Gale Street. There was excitement about the trail expansions, some concerns for the mixed use of cyclists and walkers. There was an interest in perhaps having separate lanes, and this is mainly thinking about the trail loop. They want to keep the park setting natural and make character to remain natural and rustic, but keeping it simple. There was a strong support for nature playground within the park. And then advocacy for play areas for all ages and abilities, including equipment for teenagers like pump track and skate板. And finally, there was a request for space for dogs and designated dog parks, all on the walking trails, having amenities for being. So based on that feedback, we started putting together some ideas of what could be. So up on the top row there, you could see what a bike and a pump track is, essentially a skills track for mountain biking and other biking abilities. There was also interest in pavilions and restrooms, and we have some ideas there, some examples of what that could look like, as well as picnic areas, places for people to congregate. Speaking to inclusive play, different types of playgrounds that allow kids of all abilities to be able to participate. Nature plays, so finding a way to utilize some of the existing amenities that are there, being able to make that into a play area that retains a natural feel to it. And then some ideas for wetland restoration and improving the area where we have flood. So right now, we're at the, at the diagram stage, we're looking at how we use, utilize the space. So what you see here right now, we're considering three options. First option has a moderate-sized bike skills park, that is the area in pink. And then picnic and, and nature and play facilities in the south meadow area, and then playgrounds both north and south of the park. The other option we're looking at is maximizing the bike skills park located both north and south. You see that the pink area is there, leveraging the existing topography in the northeast where we get some steeper terrain. The parking area and trailhead are a little bit larger capacity there, that's right next to the B Street Storage. And then the playground program is a little bit smaller to accommodate the large. Third option we're looking at is maximizing wetland restoration program, particularly in the flood-prone creekside area, including some bird blind observation overlook, picnic and nature play facilities in the north meadow, and minimizing the bike skills park, which would be down. So this is just a closer look of where certain amenities would be, the same three options, a little closer layout. So we've evolved from the blobs of color to signify the areas, actually starting to put some concept plans together. This is currently where, where we're at, at that level, schematic design. Look forward to the next time that we meet with you, having a lot more information and more design. As was mentioned earlier, there are some metro grants that have been given for this project that we're looking to take advantage into our design. So one of them is a wetland restoration at Kyle Park, the grant award of one hundred and thirty-four thousand to improve wetland restoration. The other one is a pollinator pathway on the Loop Trail, grant award of eighty-six thousand, eighty-eight thousand, four hundred. And the last one is the indigenizing the Loop Trail, grant award of one hundred and forty-seven thousand to provide, bringing indigenous elements to the trail. So those are all grants that were received recently. And so that really gives an opportunity to use that and implementing it to the signs that we are able to accommodate this. Thank you.
Council President Rippey.
I got lots of questions. So first of all, when you're looking at the Loop Trail, well, let me back up. Several years ago, there was a large, or a conference that brought in people from all of the regional trails. So you had people from the Banks, Rononia, the Salmonberry, all of the trails, to include the Council Creek and Yamhalis. If you look at a map of all those regional trails, Forest Grove is the hub, next to them all. So when you're planning the Loop Trail, would you please keep that into consideration that this is a hub? And that might, might also be some room for some extra funding, too, if you consider that. So on the Loop Trail, and I think Ann probably has a question to this or answer, is the Lower Forest Glen Park part of that Loop Trail plan?
Well, that is uncertain at this time.
Is what?
Uncertain at this time, as we're exploring best routes. That's a challenging area.
Yeah, it's a challenging area, but it's probably very underutilized.
I totally agree.
All right. Kyle Park, I liked option three, and the reason I liked option three was that it gave the local residents to the north there the most respect for quiet. If you put bike, bike things up there, there's going to be noise. And those people up there have backyard porches facing that area, and they're not certain that they're going to want to bother, bother bike noise. So I like option three, the north part of option three. So if you can figure out how to do something else there, that's fine. The other question I had there was, you see that area to the west, that's kind of a light yellow. It's not part of Kyle property, but is that in the city limits? Do we know? It is.
Where are you at right now?
So if you, yeah, right there. There's a big field there, and I'm, if that's city property, I'm curious as to why we don't include that.
Yes, it's in the city limits. No, it is not city property. It is owned by the development company that constructed that neighborhood, Gale Street cares.
Okay, all right. And then when we talked about wetland restoration, I've been out there in Kyle property, there's all sorts of old cement, old asphalt, old, you know, just, it's horrible. So to what extent is the wetland restoration going to go? Are you, are you going to try and take all that stuff out?
We will really look to our partners at Clean Water Services to help guide us through that. We will really look to our partners at Clean Water Services to help guide us through that. And also with Metro, as obviously they're a terrific partner in this too. And have, both parties have great interest in it. But we'll work closely with them to determine what is the extent of the cleanup and the restoration, what does that look like?
That's a challenge. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I had. Thank you.
Welcome. I have a few comments and then a couple of questions as well. Wait, I'll go to Council Ewing. Go ahead, Council Ewing.
Thanks. I have, excuse me, a question about the input on Kyle Park. I know there was a lot of electronic information about it, but we still, again, and I'd like to remind people that we have community members that do not have access to those electronic type of notifications. So along that line, is there a way to still provide input for Kyle Park from those community members who were not aware that there was an open house going on?
There's definitely going to be more opportunities for input. And I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure about the electronic input. Do you speak more to that, Anne?
So yes, there is still plenty of opportunity to provide input. I will communicate with Stephanie, our communications gal, and see if there's any opportunities coming up in print version that she can include some, some way for people to connect with us in that fashion.
I'd appreciate that. And please remember also, Anne, when you talk with Stephanie, that those also need to be in bilingual so that our community members that not only don't maybe have access to electronics, but also have print material, that that information about input and open houses and those types of things also need to be done in Spanish. Another question that I had regarding the natural area and park, I agree that I think that option three meets also more of the community outlining area need for quiet peace, those types of things. But I'm curious that we're talking about bikes and the noise. Are we talking only about non-motorized bikes?
So at some point, we will, we will need to have a conversation with council about what is City of Forest's position on motorized transportation on trail systems. That's, this is a sticky one, so yeah, to be continued.
I would hate for us to do it as an afterthought and have people in there using their motorized, especially if we're looking to make it more of a natural setting, using motorized vehicles, not just for the sound, but also for the damage that it does to the environmental area. When you're talking about, my last question, when you're talking about, you know, the wetlands and the cleanup, is there a way, and this is just more kind of a philosophy type of thing, but I would like to see especially young people who are going into biology, going into ecology, those types of things where they can help participate in how that restoration could take place, but also hands-on experience in that restoration?
Yeah, I think there is opportunity ahead of us to work with some local partners. I'm thinking about Pacific University in particular on this. So yeah, I think there's plenty of opportunity in front of us.
Thank you, Anne. Thank you guys for coming this evening as well.
Okay, I have just a couple of comments and questions. First of all, thank you, Anne, for getting those grants and looking for them, finding them and doing that. I really enjoy working with place and Alta, is Alta? Yeah, so thank you all for your work. But I guess I'm, I want to know a little bit more about the timeline of more engagement. Because I would assume you're going to take these options from working with place before, take these options back out to community events, and then do a little DOT activity. I would just like to say that the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, the students on that would like to be a part of helping you all at the capacity you would like to help them. So they would also like to be a part of that. Yeah, I think that all three of these options are good. The other thing I would say is that that neighborhood, Gales Creek Terrace, does not have a good park space. So I really do hear what Council Rippey's saying, but I also think that it's like, the more, the more options you can fit in for, because that, that development was built, right, like high density, multi-use, like mixed family. I mean, so I think really making a concerted effort to engage with that community, if it's even going to their little park, they have like one slide and saying like, hey, this is what we're doing down here. What would you like to see? Because I really think that this park is going to be a continuation of that neighborhood and really help alleviate that. That neighbor, I don't know if you guys ever go in there, but the roads are really small and like, this is such a good place for kids to go, close by their house, that gets them out of the road. And there's parking on both sides. It's like a total, it just gives me high anxiety, right, when I go in there. So I see this as being really good. So it's hard for me to say, I think all these options are good, but I really think, you know, you want to make sure that you check with the neighborhood and what we're really missing in our whole park system, right? Oh, and then one other thing I want to say is that pump bike track, there was a group that came to the Parks and Rec Commission, literally like two meetings before COVID happened, and they were going to work to redo Lincoln Park. And then I believe the pandemic happened and some things. So that would be, so that was in the plans five years ago from Lincoln Park. Just going back at the vault a little bit. So I don't know if you want to reach out to them as well. Okay, those are my comments.
I do want to say we have reached out to those folks and we have them actively engaged with us on this project.
They have?
And they are super excited, yes.
Okay, good, good, cool. Awesome. Well, thank you all so much. Thanks for coming out. Have a great night. Okay, we are now moving on to item F on our agenda, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. So let's switch gears. I will now open the public hearing on resolution two zero two four dash two nine. If approved by the city council, this resolution will establish the surface water management rates for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Will staff plead, or does staff have a report?
Brief report, yes. Starting July one of two thousand seventeen, the city started setting its own local surface water management rate and Clean Water Services sets the regional rate. The city, Clean Water Services proposing a four percent rate increase effective July one, twenty twenty-four. And the cities, the city is proposing matching that four percent increase. The current city's rate is nine dollars and seven cents for the city portion. And the city is proposing a four percent increase, which should take it to nine dollars and forty-three cents per month effective July one, twenty twenty-four. If you take the impact of both the Clean Water Services and the city's rate increases, it will increase the total cost by forty-seven cents per equivalent dwelling unit per month from eleven dollars and seventy cents to twenty dollars and seventeen cents per month for a single family residence. Take any questions the council has?
Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will now call on persons who have signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents signed up to testify? Seeing none, are there any on Zoom? No attendees at all. Are there any opponents who would like to testify? Seeing none. Anyone who would like to give other comments? Seeing none. So there's no response from staff to testimony? So the hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve the resolution?
I move that we approve resolution two zero two four dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Resolution two zero two four dash twenty-nine was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Councilor Martinez. Is there, are there any additional questions or further discussion from the council on the motion before we proceed? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Excuse me, I was going to read those. Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-nine, establishing surface water management, in parentheses, swim rate for the City of Forest Grove effective July one, twenty twenty-four, and repealing resolution number twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Councilor Gustafson?
We didn't hear you, councillor. Still, we're still not getting volume.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Council Marshall?
Yes.
Council Martinez?
Yes.
Council Valenzuela?
Yes.
Council Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The vote is seven to zero. Resolution two zero two four dash two nine is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item F two, which is resolution two zero two four dash three zero. I will now open the public hearing on resolution two zero two four dash three zero. If approved by the city council, this resolution will establish sewer utility rates for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Seeing none. Does staff have a report for council?
Yes. Similar to swim rates, sewer rates were separated out between Clean Water Services and the city in July one, two thousand seventeen. For this next coming year, Clean Water Service proposing a four percent increase of the regional sewer rates as of July one, twenty twenty-four. Staff is proposing a matching four percent increase of the local rate as of July one, twenty twenty-four. As has been our practice to match the Clean Water Services rate increases to keep pace with increasing costs. Post-resolution would increase the city's base rate from ten dollars and twenty-nine cents to ten dollars and seventy cents per dwelling equivalent unit, and the usage charge from fifty cents per thousand gallons per month to fifty-two cents per thousand gallons per month. The increases to both Clean Water Services and the city sanitary sewer rates will increase the total sewer rate for typical residential customer from fifty-six dollars and seventy cents to fifty-nine dollars and seven cents per month, which is a total increase of two dollars and thirty-seven cents per month. Take any questions the council may have?
Questions for staff? Seeing none. I will now call on persons who signed up to comment on the resolution. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any proponents who would wish to testify? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Anyone who would like to give other comments? Seeing none. The hearing is now closed. Is there a motion from council to approve resolution two zero two four dash three zero?
I move we approve resolution two zero two four dash three zero.
Council Gustafson?
Thank you. Resolution two zero two four dash three zero was moved by Council Martinez and seconded by Council Gustafson. Are there any additional discussion or questions from the council on the resolution? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty, establishing city sewer utility rates for the City of Forest Grove effective July one, twenty twenty-four, and repealing resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Councilor Martinez?
Yes.
Councilor Marshall?
Yes.
Council Valenzuela?
Yes.
Council Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. The vote is seven to zero. Resolution two zero two four dash three zero is approved by the Forest Grove City Council. Moving on to item F three, resolution two zero two four dash three one, I will turn it over to Mr. Downey.
This is a resolution to accept the Clean Water Services rates for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Our city code requires that the council accept the Clean Water Services rates, which is the reason why we bring this resolution to you. The resolution, the rates, the Clean Water Services are talking about, we've already talked about the swim and the sewer rates themselves being a four percent increase and the fiscal impact, total fiscal impact to residential customer for those. Clean Water Services is proposing a two percent, two point seven percent increase for the sewer SDC from six thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars to seven thousand nine dollars per dwelling equivalent unit, and a two point seven percent increase in the swim SDC from six hundred and sixty to six hundred and seventy-eight dollars per equivalent unit. The city, the city retains twenty percent of the sewer SDC, Clean Water Services receives eighty percent. And the, the city retains all of the swim SDC. We don't, we don't remit any of the swim SDC back to Clean Water Services. So that's staff. I'll take any questions council may have?
Questions for staff? Seeing none. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve resolution two zero two four dash three one.
Resolution two zero two four dash three one was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Councilor Marshall. Is there any further discussion or questions from the council? Seeing none. Will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution twenty-four dash thirty-one, accepting Clean Water Services sanitary sewer utility rates, surface water management, swim rates, swim system development charges, as paragraph FDC, and sanitary sewer SDC effective July one, twenty twenty-four, and repealing resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call the roll?
Council Gustafson? Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Council Martinez?
Yes.
Council Marshall?
Yes.
Council Valenzuela?
Yes.
Council Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution two zero two four dash three one is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Moving right along to resolution two zero two four dash three two, we'll go back to Mr. Downey.
The city adopted its current investment policy on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. To make sure the policy stays current and in line with best practices, the policy requires annual review and adoption by the city council. Staff has reviewed the current investment policy with our investment advisors, and we're recommending no change to the policy. There were, we made numerous changes when the policy was last adopted by the council in twenty twenty-two. This policy does not apply to the city's defined benefit plan investments, which are covered by a separate policy, since the, what you can invest in between our defined benefit plan and the city's regular funds is vastly different. City currently has approximately eighty-four million dollars in cash and investment in all funds. Approximately twenty-seven point five million of those are invested in the local government investment pool, which is managed by Oregon State Treasury. The remainder, approximately fifty-six and a half million dollars, is invested in US government treasuries and agencies with varying maturity dates through December eighth, twenty twenty-eight. So we have been working with our investment, outside investment frame to ladder our investments so we have investments rolling over continually, like one every three months or so. That way, as interest rates change, we can deal with the changing interest rates better. So I'll take any questions council may have?
Any questions for staff? Okay. Seeing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two.
I second.
Second, Council Gustafson.
Okay, thank you. Resolution two zero two four dash three two was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded by Council Martinez. Is there further discussion from the council? Online, seeing none. Okay, will the city, will the Assistant City Manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, re-adopting the investment policy for the City of Forest Grove dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and repealing resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fifty-six.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll?
Councilor Gustafson?
Yes.
Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-two has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Moving along to item F-five. Resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-three, making appointments to city of Forest Grove Advisory Boards, Committees and Commissions. I'm gonna let Assistant City Manager, Mr. Downey, do that.
And last fall, you interviewed and appointed fifteen members to boards and commissions. Due to the number of remaining vacancies, we conducted another recruitment to try to fill those boards and commissions on vacancies that occurred from March fifteenth through April thirtieth. And we advertised and accepted applications. The council had a work session on June tenth, interviewed applicants and reached consensus on the, the appointments that are listed in the resolution. So, tonight, council bought forth that resolution for council approved to make those appointments.
Any questions for staff? I don't really have a question, I just wanna make a statement. I just really appreciate people volunteering to serve the community. You know, we had our Parks Rec, CCE, now a planning member, coming in on your own time and working for our community is the greatest gift you could give, so I just wanna say thank you. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve, um, resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-three.
I second. Thank you. Resolution, hang on, let me make sure I write this down. Resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-three was moved by Counselor Gustafson and seconded by Counselor Martinez. Is there any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, resolution two-zero-two-four three-three, making appointments to city of Forest Grove Advisory Boards, Committees and Commissions is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. Good. Item F-six, resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-four, is an, about an intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Grove School District and the city. I'm gonna invite our Parks and Rec Director, Ms. Ann Lane, up.
Hello again.
Hi. All right, in May, the Forest Grove School District was notified that they would receive funding through Oregon Department of Education to provide recreation and enrichment services for students participating in summer school programs. Shortly after, the school district was notified of the award. They reached out to the city of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation Department and invited us to be the primary service provider. School district funds received by Oregon Department of Education will be utilized to compensate the city of Forest Grove for services rendered as outlined in the attached intergovernmental agreement. It is estimated that approximately five hundred and fifty youth ages three years to seventeen years will be served by the city of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation through this opportunity that otherwise would not have likely been able to participate in regularly scheduled Parks and Recreation summer. But happy to take any questions.
Of course, I have questions. I think this is great. But I'm just curious, so with this funding and this program, is it going to be specifically used by, are you just gonna do an extended day program almost, like they'll go to school, do academics in the morning and then have recreation after that?
So, Cody, our recreation coordinator and I have been meeting regularly with the school district to figure out what is the best approach to deliver these services. Many of the grade levels have opted to have us come in during their instruction time to provide a little bit of a break.
A little P.E.
And so, we have planned accordingly, but we've also implemented a, a pretty robust schedule to get the kids out and go to different fun destinations. We also heard in those meetings, a, a great desire to keep kids engaged throughout the summer and provide a little bit of a carrot to keep them going. So, we came up with a, a plan with the school district to make that happen, so there will be some incentives provided by Parks and Recreation along the way with a great big prize at the end. So,
Very cool.
Students participating in the program and their families will have, uh, receive a voucher to go to Washington County Fair and they'll get a, a full, full access ride bracelet for the, so, a big, big reward at the end if they can go to all of their summer school programs and participate in everything.
That's amazing. Is there, can, I mean, you know, I'm gonna dream big, but maybe not dream super big, but is, can we use any of the funding for like drop? Like, one of the things I've heard in the community and I heard at our, um, our joint work session is how nice it would be to have like drop in basketball or drop in volleyball or pickleball or whatever it is, you know, in the evening for kids. Kinda like, you know, you drop your kids off at the pool for a public swim. Is there any way to use some of that funding to like pilot that so we can show that it works?
So, funding constraints are, are pretty, pretty clear there on how we can spend the money, the timeframe, who is to be the recipient of the, our services. So, we are pretty limited on what we can, what we can do, but I think Cody and I put together a, um, pretty neat thing for the, for the kids this summer.
Yeah, it sounds amazing. Good job. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Wait, what is the wish of the, of the council? Anybody? Two, two-four-three-four.
I move to approve, uh, resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-four.
I'll second.
Perfect. Resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-four was moved by Counselor Marshall and seconded by Council President Rippey. Is there any further discussion from the council?
Well, I'm, you know, I'm just pleased to see the school district and the city working together for recreation and I just think it's a good starting point. You know, hopefully with the consultant and Pacific onboard and Cornelius, we're gonna like continue to see. But also in a way that doesn't create more stress on any one organization, but it seems like more of like a help than a hindrance to an organization. So, I'm, I'm pleased to see the collaborative approach with this project. Those are my only comments. Anyone else?
Okay, so will the Assistant, Sid, do you need to read, yeah, will the Assistant City Manager read the resolution by title only?
Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-four, authorizing city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Forest Grove School District, parentheses FGSD, to provide enrichment activities for students of the FGSD between June two thousand and twenty-four and September two thousand and twenty-four.
Great. Um, I think because this has to do with money, we'll do a roll vote. Yeah, well, sorry, will the city recorder please call roll?
Counselor Gustafson? Council President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes, resolution two-zero-two-four dash three-four has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a vote of seven to zero. We are now gonna move on to counselor reports. Let's go, usually they have a list and the word, it's okay, it's fine. Um, let's go. I will start with Council President Rippey.
All right, thank you. On Monday, June seventeenth, the Chamber Board held their annual retreat. In that retreat, they highlighted the fact that their membership has increased by nearly twenty-five percent in the past year, which is very good. The morning session of the retreat, uh, this was a discussion of their twenty-two-four, twenty-two-six strategic plan. And the afternoon session was a presentation and discussion on the Business Development Center that they will be creating, uh, that's been initially funded by our Community Impact. On, um, I, I was in attendance at the Board and Commission Appreciation Gathering. I think it went well. I think the perspective that I've received, the feedback that I've received from both staff and participants was that it was a good venue, a, a good time, and, uh, so yeah, I think it went well. The Fire Services Task Force met on Friday, June twenty-first. The discussion has result, revolved mainly around a need for a reassessment. So, the original study with regard to fire services was conducted in two thousand and fifteen. And the the, the scope of that study, the assumptions that were made, the changes that have occurred since then have kind of compelled us to realize that in order for us to do an accurate assessment of going forward, whether or not to go forward, there needs to be a reassessment. For example, the five jurisdictions, there were five jurisdictions that started. One of them has since, uh, withdrawn. When that study was conducted, Cornelius had no levy for public safety. They have since passed two levies and their most recent one increased the levy by three times. So, they have substantial more resources. Forest Grove's levy passed. So, there have been quite a number of changes that have occurred that draw into question whether or not the original assumptions are still valid. Part of this has been brought around because in the different options that this group has been looking at, we did a cursory financial comparison, but did not include an in-depth analysis of governance, operations, or, um, yeah, governance and operation. It did do something on the, the financial side. One of the other options, quite honestly, is to consider TVFNR. And, uh, TVFNR would do their own assessment if asked. We have not asked them. That would be something that all jurisdictions would have to approve to do the ask. So, that hasn't, that hasn't been brought before you or the other boards and councils. But it could be an option, and if we wanna consider that, then we should have a, an in-depth analysis of the other option in order to be able to, um, take, uh, cause that's what TVFNR, a very in-depth analysis. And we simply wouldn't be able to compare the other option. So, um, we're looking at essentially two phases. The first phase would be to have this group, um, hire a facilitator and do a reassessment of the purpose, the scope and the assumption. Start there. If, if that results in, we don't, you know, we don't need to go any further, well, that's what it results in. But it may result in a phase two and that, and nobody would go forward with phase two without the approval of all jurisdictions. So, this so, quote-unquote, phase one is just need to reassess what, what we're talking about. The, not only have the changes occurred within the jurisdictions involved, but the changes have occurred throughout the region. And the whole industry has changed. The call volume has changed, the type of call volume has changed. The, uh, ambulance services have changed. So much has changed that we do, we need to do a reassessment. So, um, that's what the, that's what this group is looking at, looking to do is, is just a reassessment initially and then that will define our next steps. All of those steps will be brought to the governing bodies for approval.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Is the first stage like, so when you say, you know, do the assessment, so are they looking at basically the municipal-run fire department? Like for us, like that's what ours is?
That's exactly a good point because, uh, that's one of the options. See, one of the options is the status quo. One of the options is an authority. Another option is a district. Our own district or, or some form of a district. Our other option, the status quo doesn't have to eat, the status quo will probably not continue because current IGAs need to be revived. So, there's, there's just so much change going on and we need to, we need to reassess.
Well, I appreciate your work on it and can you, will you let Jesse or staff know, like, so when you, when they come back with findings and recommendations so we can have a work session?
Yep.
Perfect.
That's exactly what I, Jesse, is there anything I missed?
No, no, it was a good report. Thank you, Counselor.
Are you good on your report?
I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, that was a good, that was a long report and that was a good one, so thanks. Okay, next up on our list is Counselor Gustafson.
Okay, so at the last, uh, last meeting, um, it's the only meeting that I had, um, it was noticed that the Festival of Arts, um, event wasn't in the What's Growing On? And I think it was expected to be in that newsletter the last time it went out. I'm not sure if it was full or if something weird happened. But I guess, I guess it wasn't in the newsletter. So, they're hoping it goes into the next newsletter. Jesse, I see you thinking and looking, so. Thank you. All right, um, all right, next one is, uh, they are working on a mural plan, so they're looking at different locations um, and costs of, of, um, murals based on the size of the location. They looked at another number of, of spots in Forest Grove, um, one of them being Lincoln Park. So, there's some really great ideas coming there. I'm excited to see what they figure out. And they're also gonna start working on a five-year plan that was requested. I think Jesse, you requested that the PACS start kind of looking into the future. So, um, they're gonna start planning a five-year plan with the understanding that it's a five-year plan and those things do change as time goes by, so it would be a working document. So, that is on, um, the list of to-do. Any questions so far? All right. The Seven Generation Sculpture Installation, um, the, there was a permit submitted with use of epoxy, um, which was declined because of, um, there was something about the epoxy that just was not gonna work. I think it was removal of the item. When there's epoxy, um, used is, is problematic. And so, they found an, an alternative to the epoxy and, um, that request has been submitted and approved, so, uh, we are rolling on the Seven Generation Sculpture. And the last one is the Guardians in the Grove, um, is being installed on July ninth, so just around the corner in the Rotary Garden. And they're gonna wait, um, probably going to wait until it's installed or until just before it's installed to schedule an actual celebration. They won't schedule the celebration the day it will be complete, um, just in case something happens that delays that installation. So, that's all I have. Anybody have questions, comments, discussion?
Any questions for Counselor Gustafson? Nope, seeing none, I'm gonna move on to Counselor Marshall.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Counselor Martinez?
So, I attended the Cow Park event. Um, it was well-attended. And then the wind decided the last hour it was gonna kick up and try to blow everything away, so it ended early, but it was a really good event. There was a lot of excitement there. Um, I went to the state of the, of Washington County. And she had a lot of good things to say about what they've done, of course, and it was pretty much what we've all talked about as far as their the building that they've done to be able to house, uh, the houseless and, and that. Also attended the Board and Commission Appreciation Reception and it, it was a nice reception. I liked the way that it was set up rather than a dinner. It was nice.
That's it? Great, thank you. Counselor Ewing?
Thanks. So, the ATM, um, is planned for the twenty-eighth from ten to noon. And we're hoping that that And we're hoping that that will also help with the Oktoberfest. And people will transition from the ATM and go up and participate and enjoy the Oktoberfest. I understand, Donna, that the Oktoberfest is looking for volunteers. Is that true? And how can somebody in the community support and help you with that?
That is true. And they can email me for the link to sign up. We have a sign up genius for that. And just another note to that, I spoke with Heather the other day, actually, I think it was at the, at the mixer. And she was going to send an email out because one of, one of the conversations she said that you had was how do we get more people to attend these ATMs? And one of the ideas was we, we need to meet people where they are type of things instead of having them come to you. And so I, I invited her to have you all set up booths at Oktoberfest. And because there's so many residents that attend that event and just have that as your place for your ATM instead of the auditorium. So she'll probably throw that idea out to you. So it'll give you something to kind of chew on for a little bit and see if that will work.
Thank you, Donna. Jesse, can we find out public hearing law? Because we also have to go over the COAT plan. Can we find out whether that would be doable? Or do we need to do it in the auditorium due to the zooming opportunities in public law? Would you check into that? Because I agree, we want to encourage and go to where the people are. But I'm not sure whether or not this particular event can manage that at this time. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you, Donna. I appreciate the idea and we'll see if we can at least grow off of getting out more in the community. I know that the team really wants to do that and to be more engaged in where people are rather than just in the auditorium. So I appreciate that. Also, the team went forward and as I mentioned in my email that the topic is going to be transportation. And I know, Melinda, that you wanted us to make sure that we invited like Ride Connection and those groups. And so we actually do have quite a list of people that we're going to be reaching out. And of course, Grove Link and Ride Connection are both on our list as well. As well as staff coming and helping with questions. So the assignments are going out. In fact, almost each part of the ATM has been assigned. We do have two new members, very excited about that. And we'll see where we can plug them into assignments as well. Our first pass on the Board Buddy with Engagement happened this month. And it started with the Historic Landmarks Board. So Heather is the Board Buddy from C C E for that particular group. And she said it just went extremely well. They were thrilled to have them there. They were excited to talk about other ways to engage and how to really kind of grow their group. So it was a good idea from the team and I'm excited to hear back about E D C and the other boards and commissions that also have buddies now. The only group we didn't put a buddy with because of our numbers was Parks and Rec. We made the decision that you guys, Parks and Recs are going through so much transformation that perhaps we would hold and let that settle a bit before we actively started doing a Board Buddy with them. Team came up with that and it just kind of has stuck and done very well. Also, I wanted to did the volunteers. Okay. So also our July meeting is being moved to the 16th because of holidays and vacations. We need to meet, but we just wanted to make sure that we would have a nice group and forum there. Let's see, Forest Grove Senior Center and Community Center did not meet in June. They will be meeting July 7th. So I'll have more information on that. And I think that that kind of is it. I would like to mention that, and I had talked to Jesse about this a little bit, is that I'm kind of feeling nervous about all of the information coming forward on data centers, especially since it may, portions of it might become quasi judicial. So I asked him to please speak to that in terms of, you know, how do we respond to those emails? Do we respond to those emails? And if we do, what is then our next step as a council member? You did that with me, Jesse. Are you comfortable with doing that this evening? Thanks. You can go forward whenever you're ready.
Okay. Are we, I think, Jesse, are you, I think he might do it in his city manager report. Are you going to do it now?
Yeah.
I don't. Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. And that's pretty much it for me. Any questions, any concerns, any last minute requests? I don't sing or dance, but whatever you guys have, I'm willing to step up and talk about. So.
Great. I don't see any. Thank you for the report. Counselor Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. So so a couple of things, this summer, the library is going to, to partner with Meals on Wheels for the summer read. For every 100 hours, adults in the community read or listen to books or podcasts, et cetera. Between June 1st and August 5th, the Friends of the Forest Grove Library, City Library will donate a meal. And so the goal here is to reach 10,000 hours. So everybody, community members, please go and get your library card and help support this cause. For the other, for the Policy Advisory Board, I have a few things. There was no meeting in May, but we did meet last week. And there were presentations from Community Action and Family Promise of Tuolumne Valley with requests. And there had been a request from the Policy Advisory Board to provide an overview of how a community connect works, how it works within the county. So they presented a Family Promise of Tuolumne Valley presented on the Emergency Solutions Grant, E S G. And sorry about that. So they, they explained the referral process and how the community members can access these funds and use these services. The other action item here is the Home Investment Partnerships Program. It does allow for auto cycle request when there is funding available, funding that hasn't been allocated. So we had a presentation from community partners for affordable housing. They had to, they submitted a request of 535,000 from the home funding to fix a sewer line. The board has already provided funding to this organization. It is a tier one community housing and development organization because 51% of their, of their homes are within the county. So this is an auto cycle request, as I said. So we were able to approve that in the last meeting. The other action item is that home, the Home Investment Partnerships Program is, was requesting, recommended a pause in the cycle. And this is because the policies and procedures need to be updated. So for the, they will not open again for applications until 25, 26. And, and that's also because the Oregon Housing and Community Services is also upgrading their process. So this program also needs to do the same. So there's going to be a pause. That was the recommendation and the board did approve that. So that's, that's all I have from that group.
Thank you, Counselor Valenzuela. Is that, okay. So now we're going to move on to the city managers' report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. With regard to the question about quasi judicial, currently there is a land use application and anytime there is a land use application and staff makes a decision if the, if somebody contacts the council about that particular land use application, if it eventually gets appealed to the city council, that could become a quasi judicial land use decision by the council in which you make an order or a decision on that specific application. If you get contacted by anybody about that application, it doesn't mean that you can't talk to them per se. You can. But if you do, then you have to disclose that contact. That's what's called an ex parte contact. It's somebody that is involved either in the decision or party to a decision. And then when that is disclosed, again, if it gets to the council on appeal, then you also have to discuss the nature of that contact. And then also if that contact biases you in any way in making a decision. So if you are receiving an email, for example, from somebody about a land use application and you do choose to respond to it, that response becomes an ex parte communication that needs to be disclosed at a potential hearing if it gets appealed to the city council. If you do not choose to respond to it, then you do not have to disclose that. So I hope that answers the question. Counsel, Counselor Ewing, does that address what you mentioned?
Yes, it does. And I appreciate that because often it gets kind of lost. And I want to make sure with as much information that's coming in that we remember that we need to make sure that we're looking at it as a quasi judicial. So thank you, Jesse. I appreciate that.
Jesse, can I ask a clarifying question? As the mayor, I took like, so I respond with, thank you for taking the time to write this email, give public comment. It will be included in the next council packet. Do I need to disclose that?
Not necessarily. I don't know.
I'm just acknowledging I received.
No, you're just acknowledging receipt of it and then including it in a public.
That was clear because you said if you respond, you have to disclose it. And I'm just want to make sure if you respond with an opinion, you have to disclose it. If you respond out of courtesy, which is, I think, a typical thing I have done in the last 10 years is just say, this is a land use system or issue. I will not discuss it until after the process is finalized. Like I just tell people very candidly, like there's some things I will not talk to you about. And land use is one of them.
You're absolutely right. I appreciate the clarification. If we respond with some kind of opinion, then that opinion or that substantive comment needs to be disclosed as part of your ex parte contact. So thanks for the clarification. A couple of other things real quick. We had the 2040 stakeholders meeting on Monday of last week. We had great attendance. We had 13 stakeholders that were there or the steering committee, excuse me, which has stakeholders on it. Most of the discussion really centered on kind of the outreach process, making sure that we, it's being inclusive, that we have everybody at the table, that we are using the venues for, for all of the outreach. So that meeting went really well, lasted for a couple hours. There was some revisions made to the outreach plan. And the council will be obviously a part of that plan as well. So that's, that's moving forward. It was, it was a really good meeting. S S W Consulting was there. Staff was there. And as I mentioned, I think we had 13 steering committees there, committee members there. Terms of construction, the East Restrooms in the library are in full swing. So you'll see a lot of dust and noise at the library. Sorry to the librarians and to the public that are enjoying the library, but it's been a little noisy and a little dusty, but they're trying to mitigate it as much as they can. But progress is, is moving forward there. 26th Avenue is almost done. They're painting lines. It looks terrific. So kudos to Greg and Public Works and their team. That's looking to be a really good project. We did get our bids for our annual pavement overlay. The bids look good this year. So we're going to get as much done that we reported to the council, if not potentially more. So we're pretty, pretty excited about that. That will include a lot of, I think we have 84 ADA ramps and curb ramps in that project. We also have, I believe it's one and a half miles of pavement. So we're going to get all of that and then, and then some additional done hopefully. And then I don't know if you'll hear about this. If you do, just as an FYI, Barney Reservoir is being lowered. They're doing some construction on the boat ramp going down into the reservoir. This is really kind of a non-issue for us because we don't use all of our Hague Lake water, which Barney eventually circles around and goes into the 12th River. But you just might hear about it because the Barney reservoir is going to be really low. It won't have an effect on Hague Lake, however, which is where we get our drinking water. So there's no reason to be alarmed per se, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. So with that, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Jesse. Yeah, I actually ran into, I was out and about today in Hillsborough and someone I ran into says they live at Casey Meadows neighborhood and they were so excited about the 26th Avenue improvements. They're like, oh, it's almost done. It looks so good. So yeah, pass on. I make thanks to Greg. Okay. I'm going to try to keep my remarks concise, but give you some good information because we're a little over time and we have another work session. So Washington County Corning Committee met on the 17th of June. And Sherwood is the only municipality that's asked for an expansion into the urban reserves. They have a Sherwood West Concept Plan. So they're applying to Metro's U G B D expansion. They have 1,300 acres. They would like, some of the highlights is diverse land use connected to transportation, more parks and green space, a variety of housing needs. You know, they got me right at, I think they have, they've had 13 different community engagement activities. They're looking at cottage, cottage clusters and, you know, mixed or multi-generation family housing. Looking for incentives for right sizing S D C fees and some other sources. So that's what's going on in development with our neighbors in Sherwood. Some really important things, ODOT, it's summer road construction. And so I-5, let me be really specific, the I-5 Bridge and North, I think it's Northwest Portland is going to be closed Sunday, June 28th through July 1st. And so ODOT's really asking municipalities to tell their community members to try to avoid I-5. The I-5 Bridge at that, on those dates, there's going to be some overnight closures on Brookwood in 26, Oregon 217. You might have noticed that starting tomorrow, Verbor Road is going to be closed for a few days. So, you know, I just, you know, a friendly, I feel like, I mean, I don't need to like mother you or nag you or micromanage people, but just a friendly reminder that this is the time where ODOT does big road construction projects. And then also we live in an agricultural area too. And so just be, you know, patient and nice to people who are helping us eat and, you know, grow our food. So there's going to be more farm equipment on the road and more closures. You know, I did attend the Washington County State of the City with Chair Harrington last week, Thursday. And we also had our Washington County Chair plus Mayor meeting. So I think that, you know, that's some of the takeaways I think that are really important for the city of Forest Grove to understand right now. And I'm going to just try to summarize it. There is a whole lot of compression and pressure on Washington County's budget. They are very constrained right now. They never had a cap. I mean, I was shocked when I became mayor and I was going, I'm like, what do you mean? You don't have a capital improvement plan? Like they don't have a C I P. So they're now just starting a C I P. So I'm not going to go into all the details of it, but where this hits us is with our library and our mistip funding. Right? So they pulled some mistip fund, some funding that usually in the past has been reserved for mistip to fund their general budget, their general fund budget. So, and now they're looking at funding mechanisms and have, have hired a consultant for funding the library. Right? To more funding come from a levy and less funding come from, you know, the county. Well, I mean, it would be a county levy. So I'm just wanna kind of highlight, you know, the importance of keeping, you know, I'm being pretty vocal. You know, my, my thought on the transportation thing, and I said it in a meeting and I don't think it was very popular. It was just that this is, this was voted, MISTIP funding was voted in, in like 1987 by the voters and prescribed for transportation. And our transportation needs are not going away. Our maintenance needs are not going away. And so to take from something that was dead, like I think it was brilliant. Like I think it was like, and you know, it seems very fair in the way that the WCCC recommends for districts and making sure projects are in each of the districts. The whole, this whole time, I'm like, wow, this is such a cooperative collaborative approach. I've been, I am very happy with how it's always been run and I would just like to see it continue to be run like that. You know, there's like a little bit of feeling from some of the mayors that the, the commissioners are saying like, oh, well, you guys are more advisory, like we don't have to follow your recommendations with the, what you're saying with the WCCC. So just keep your eyes on that. The timeline for, so we had a presentation about the WCCLS budget and, um, but, and they haven't really made a recommendation, but they're gonna come to us with more, um, more information hopefully soon. Uh, the MEAC, my Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, met again. And we consistently have about nine people attending meetings. Oh, go ahead, you had a question?
Before you go on to that, uh, do we know whether or not the Maple?
That supposedly, sorry.
Is that still funded?
Yeah, that supposedly should not be impacted by any of these things because that already had the site plan and already has been, so that still should not change even based on the difference in funding. So that's great news. Um, okay, so our Mayor's Youth, Mayor's Youth Advisory Council met and I'll just give you a little highlights from their meeting. They're working on a voters' registration drive. And they're gonna partner with, uh, um, the youth organization, the political group at Pacific. Um, they already wrote an email to Morgan, who is the advisor there. They are interested in service projects. So if, when you go to, um, you know, so for Chamber with the, um, corn roast, they would be willing to volunteer. Or if anyone has on any of their commissions or any of their organizations' service projects, uh, we have a group that would like to be included. I would just also like to tell city staff that, you know, they definitely wanna be included with park designs and they have opinions. So I was like, well, is there anything else that you guys wanna work on? And one of the, um, members said, well, I'm concerned that the Vic, there's no more plots for the Viking House to build a house. And so she was asking if there was a way the city could make a policy to, like, like when, if something's annexed, like reserve spaces for the school district to build those houses. I don't know, but anyways, I thought that was very interesting. Like, uh, those are some of the questions and concerns that they come. Every time I go there, they bring up topics I would like, would not even have on my agenda. So it's good fun. So, um, I think, and then, yeah, I think that's all I have. Okay, so I'm gonna adjourn this meeting of the Forest Grove City Council and we will reconvene in one minute for our last work session.